Good evening. Welcome to the January 14th New Market Planning Board Meeting. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any public comments?
Oh, I'm here to watch.
Cool. So, hearing none, I will close the public comments at seven, I have 7:03. Next is review and approval of minutes, December 10th meeting, we have the minutes, I want to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, we have, just for the record, we have Val on Zoom tonight, I don't see anybody else out there.
Yeah, Val, can you kind of state where you are and is there anyone in the room with you?
She's frozen.
There is no one in the room with me.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, so first on the agenda is amend the develop, oh, wait a minute, Bill, Jeff's not here, right?
Yeah.
It's all point, Bill, to sit in.
Yep.
You're official tonight, Bill. Moving up in the world. A men developers agreement between the town of Newmarket and Maplewood and Vaughn Holding Company LLC to change the water and sewer impact fee designation to system development charges or take any other action relative thereto.
So, um, yep, so this is the development located on Forbes Road, it's lot six and it's lot six and seven technically, but, um, so this is the new development and basically what we're trying to attempt to do is change impact fees to assistance development charge. As everyone knows, we've kind of switched our approach to water and sewer from changing from an impact fee where you can only spend it on specific things related to that development to a system development charge where you can incorporate those funds to the whole system to help improve it. The applicant has agreed to make the switch in the agreement, so to make it legal, what we have to do is change the developers agreement between the planning board and the developer. So, what the request is this evening is for the board to amend the agreement or permit the chair to amend the agreement to switch to assistance development charges.
And then numbers stay the same?
Numbers stay the same, yeah.
Okay, so it really just had administrative?
Correct.
Does anybody have any questions? Val, any questions? I think she said no. Yeah. Okay, I want to entertain a motion to approve then. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion passes. Next is item B, review of application for Stafford Regional Planning Commission of Commissioner's applicant Sarah Reitzman.
Yeah, so we, Lisa Henderson, who used to be one of our reps, the other one is Peter Nelson, but Lisa, um, she resigned, I think it might have been a year, and so during this time, we've been trying to find someone to fill in for the vacant spot for Stafford Regional Plan, so there's commissioners there and they kind of help guide the overall regional planning commission. So, each community gets two representatives, I believe, and so what we're trying to do is fill this vacancy. And so Sarah Reitzman, she lives in town and, um, you know, kind of for her letter, you can see right here, she's really into the housing challenges, she works at New Hampshire Financing, before that, she worked at the Workforce Housing Coalition for the Greater Sea Coast. You know, I personally know Sarah, you know, full disclosure, I'm on the board for the Workforce Housing Coalition, so I've worked with her in the past, she's a great person, really knows her stuff from a housing perspective, and I think she'd make a great candidate to represent the town. So, just my, you know, my opinion on it, but again, you know, read her, her letter and, you know, just open up the discussion from there. So, the kind of the whole process is the planning board makes a referral to the town council and the town council ultimately votes on the appointment. So, it's, you know, kind of this is the first step to fill in that vacancy.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
She looks very qualified, I mean, she's got credentials and stuff. My only question is, and I'm glad that we got her, but why did we wait a year to try to fill?
Can't find anyone.
Couldn't find anyone?
Yeah.
Because I never saw that we were looking for somebody.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I mean, I would at least told people I know or something.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that could be a miscommunication there, but.
Yeah, that's all, that's my only comment is just, you know, maybe we should.
Yep, better notification, yeah.
I've known Sarah for probably over five years and she's more than qualified for the position.
So, we don't have another representative?
We have one, yeah, Peter Nelson.
Peter Nelson, yeah. He still represents us?
Sounds good.
All right, do I hear a motion to recommend approving her to the council?
Approve her application, yes.
Is there a second?
Go ahead.
Jake, jumping right in there. Any discussion?
Sorry, I just didn't know if you were going to do it, so.
Is it a definite position?
No, I think so, a few year terms, I don't know the exact, it's either three or five year terms.
Anybody else? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Like to publicly thank Sarah for volunteering. All right, next is review and discussion on proposed zoning amendments. So, I think we probably ought to start with Bart giving us a update.
Yeah, so I guess what we're trying to do this evening is, at the last planning board meeting, we discussed kind of breaking up, you know, looking at the different zoning districts, you know, individually and then making recommendations to the town council. And as we review these zoning districts, these proposed zones, is we kind of break it up and kind of segment it and, you know, take a, a kind of a region by region approach because there might be slight differences through this because it kind of expands from Durham line to the car wash on exit of road, so kind of more a methodical approach in reviewing the proposed language and how that would potentially shake out with any type of redevelopment opportunities and if there's any changes we want to make, then, you know, this is the time to do it. So, what I did, a couple of things, I did meet with Val as we discussed at the planning board meeting earlier this, a couple of weeks ago, and we kind of, you know, looked at the North Main Street, so Durham to the, the bridge, the Veterans Bridge there, and, you know, we kind of look at that area for, you know, doing a small build out analysis and Val can speak to that a little further. But as we go through that process tonight, we also have some prompt questions here for us to think about as we consider language, consider the zoning language and, you know, what, what do we actually want to achieve for this area, what do we want to see, you know, what are the non-negotiable items that we want to communicate to people who are redeveloping their properties, you know, in order to expand that downtown feeling that the community wants, that vibrancy, that commercial activity, you know, that, you know, social space, at the same time adding housing opportunities as well. So, you know, again, what that is, you know, we're gonna, you know, try to figure that out and I thought I just enumerate some of the, some kind of thoughts of mine to help spur that discussion as we go through, you know, this segment of the rezoning. So, in your packet here, we have the map here and, you know, again, it's this orange segment from Durham line on North Main Street to the Veterans Bridge. This is page six. So, kind of give like a context of this area. So, we have, you know, we start from the Durham line, you know, we have some smaller properties, we've got some, actually some density there already with the Cheney developments, and we've got Obashan, we used to have a daycare, I'm not sure if it's a daycare anymore, but there, but laundromat, we've got some kind of commercial real estate there, vacant land, but as you go to the east as well, this, these lots, it turns into flood plain, you know, as you get towards the Lamprey River as well, so that back portion of the lot, it's gonna be, you know, not developable in a sense, and it could be opportunities there as well as we, you know, consider these zoning where, you know, if we want to, you know, front load a lot of the development towards 101, but there's preservation in the back, it might be opportunity for open space as well and conversations with property owners or developers as what that could be from a public access standpoint as well. Again, you know, just some thoughts, you know, as you get towards Dame Road, we've got some vacant land, we've got that parking lot, we have some potential parcels as well there that could be redeveloped in the future, you know, longer term probably, some big spots, and some of the lots may have to be cleaned up, but again, there are larger portions, larger lots there. And as we move further south, you know, going towards that bridge, the lots get smaller, the land gets steeper, you know, you got, you know, you've got some potential brownfields there as well, think of the gas station there, who knows what's there?
Garage.
And the garage as well, Cruzecks, LaFog, and then you get to the bridge and, you know, those eastern portion, the western portion of those lots, that's steep, you know, you've got a couple duplexes there, again, everything would have to be really close to the road. And then, I guess we can kind of circle, a lot of the mills are already developed, like Selectwood, that's already done, Brian Rock, you know, that's already done, but we have a little more density too on the opposite side of that street right now, so what could that become, if anything, so. So, again, I have these questions in front of us and as we kind of maybe want to start north to south and just looking at these questions, you know, one by one, potentially if the board wants to approach it this way, but.
Sure, can I just, hey, Val? Do you want to speak about the analysis you and Bart worked on, what your thoughts are for the type of developments on the north side of town along the 101 corridor?
So, where we're at at this point is the identification by the tax map and lot numbers of all of the parcels, like from the bridge north, the acreage, calculations to square footage, if they're owner occupied or not, what the existing uses, and then almost finished with number of bedrooms. The breakdown is, we've got a total of, it's fifty, it's fifty-three individual parcels in total on the riverfront side, which is going to be the west side, there's twenty-nine for a total of thirty-one acres, about half is developable because of the shoreline setbacks. And then on the east side, there's twenty-four lots, that about twenty-six acres in total, most of which is, would be considered all developable, so you have a total of fifty-six acres. Breakdown of fifty-three lots is there's six vacant lots, um, which are, five of which are on the west side, so all developable, there's six that are mixed use, six that are solely commercial, fifteen single families, thirteen duplexes, and seven with just three or more units. There's only a few, a couple apartment buildings, you know, density of twelve, there's three in total. So, I think the big development potential is going to be on the east side, um, as opposed, yeah, relative to build out of more residential, just because they tend to be larger lots, larger frontages, a lot of the parcels on the riverfront side really don't have the adequate frontage to support, with the exception getting down past the thrift shop in the bowling alley, to do some of the larger density proposed types of buildings. So, not to the point where we have laid out what particular buildings will go on each lot, but just doing some, you know, just preliminary looking at this, it's pretty easy to get a couple hundred units there as opposed to where currently at forty, sixty, there's a total right now of number of units, I've got at a hundred on the fifty-three lots. And when I say a hundred, a hundred residential units.
So, when you talk about potential residential or potential units, are?
We add another couple hundred.
Are you figuring?
So, we could go from what is a hundred now, when we really finish this build out, there's no doubt that we can bring, um, just the north of the bridge from a hundred residential units, basically up to three hundred, you can easily grab two hundred units up on that corridor.
Val, you're referring mixed use or you're announcing strictly residential at this point?
No, even on a mixed use, you can get the density of the units if we, and Bart's laid out some great questions, if the, say, the main level or the street side level is residential, sorry, is commercial, and then, you know, above that or behind that is the residential.
Right. So, that's a model.
Even though, even the projects that are currently twelve units, like the Cheney projects, you know, Plasky Drive or on the north end, you can easily double those densities based upon the proposed, you know, if we're moving forward with this form-based zoning.
Okay, thank you.
How would you do that, like on the Plasky Drive apartment, how would you gain that much more?
Dense, taller buildings or? Building out more than?
City on that site. Or a better example is like where the laundromat would be, so some of those buildings currently are one or two stories, you know, because some are built into the hillside, those could easily, those, that, just that section alone could be redeveloped and going from twelve units or on both, so we've got a total of twenty-four units on one, two, three, four parcels. There's currently twenty-four, twenty-six, there's twenty-nine units, you could double that density.
I'm sorry, which lot?
How? You're not, you're, you're not encumbered by the shoreline setback, you have, you know, significant acreage and frontage when you, so you could do almost like, you know, a few courtyard, you know, type apartment buildings there if it was going to be solely residential. And then, because there's more backland there, you could do commercial on the street side and end up with the density. The other one would be the, I call it the staging lot on the opposite side of the street, you know, right before the hardware store. You've got three, you've got three acres there, you know, significant frontage, so that's a vacant lot that you could do, you could, you know, if it was solely residential, you would have several, you know, courtyard buildings. Which, you know, there's nothing there now and a large courtyard building is sixteen units. If you did just two there or three with commercial on the street side, you're, you know, you're getting that density at, you know, all of a sudden forty-eight units.
Is it, is it permanent use, is it sixteen units per lot or sixteen?
Per lot. Yeah, so, but there's no.
Density by building type.
Right, right.
Family residential use up to sixteen units, so, but there's no minimum lot size, so you could subdivide the land.
How do you fit it on the lot?
Right.
You know, as, because the, the concept of the building is a ninety-five by a hundred foot building. So, that, if you think about, that's the footprint, when you take some of these larger parcels, you know, this is over three acres and it has significant, the, the topography of it, not the topography, but the configuration of it is such as it lends itself to, you know, one entrance in off of Main Street with a multiple unit concept of the courtyard buildings.
So, sorry, going back to Plasky Drive, if, if, if the limit is sixteen units per lot.
No, it's not. There's no lot limit, it's a building limit.
Well, it says, I think, Val, in the zoning, it says, any multifamily residential use up to sixteen units, so to me, that means on a lot, you can have up to sixteen units.
Sorry, I wasn't looking at it. I was looking at it just from the, what would fit on the lot, because if you think about a two, then you'll have the ability to subdivide lots.
Right, and that's the thing, like you have, there's no minimum lot size, so again, you know, you just basically do.
You know, three one acre lots.
Yeah.
So, would we, I mean, they all say no minimum parking.
Right, so kind of one of my ideas about this is, you know, what is a by right development? What would that look like under the zoning and where does a special use permit come into play, where you may have different controls saying, prove to us you have the parking? So, that's kind of one of my prompt questions here is, you know, what?
You're playing me with development by right?
Means like you, you basically don't need any, you just go through site plan review and you're allowed by right to build X amount of units, whereas if you go above a certain threshold, we'll say, in this case, say you go above sixteen. Whereas if you go above a certain threshold, we'll say in this case, say you go above sixteen. You have to go to the plan board and for a special use permit and there's criteria that you need to meet. And one of that criteria or criterion is prove to the board, either, you know, one space per unit or prove to the board that you have sufficient parking. And one, you're not going to impact local and, um, state roads. So meaning you can't park on them. So how are you going to fit it? So that's something maybe to consider. Um, you know, does the board want to go that way or do, do they want to kind of scratch the idea of, um, no parking standards and maybe I think at least, uh, you know, I think state law has changed by at least one per unit.
I was looking at as to what fits on existing lots.
Right.
As opposed to, um, portions of, you know, Ivy's recommended ordinance. In, in regards to density on a lot.
So.
People can, you can reconfigure lots and potentially re-subdivide, but even if you, if one courtyard building would fit on. Up along Main Street so that you, you could have, you know, a one acre parcel or two acre parcel. They're long and deep, they have sufficient frontage to do a ninety-five, you know, by hundred foot building with sixteen units in it. So now all of a sudden you're at sixty-four units on just on four lots. Cause it fits.
And also.
And if you stayed with a lot density, if, if it's a lot, if it's a density per lot as opposed to acreage. That would work for that particular landowner.
But in your analysis, Val, I mean, how do, how do?
Conversation though, I think to jump into some of Bart's questions in a, in a minute, I'm sure. As to would you want, you know, would we want apartment buildings all along the frontage of Main Street? Is that, it's that, I don't think that really achieves our objective of expanding.
Downtown.
Yeah.
No, I, I agree, that's what I said earlier.
At a minimum, we have to have mixed use, I believe.
Val, you're coming in broken up.
Yeah, hey, hey Val, you want to try to shut off the camera? Maybe the, the audio will come in better. Yeah, we can hear you, but you're coming in and now.
Yeah.
Yeah, try the, try to shut off the camera. Yes.
Yeah, you're coming in broken up.
Yeah, he's just broken up.
Sorry.
Okay.
Like I said, she shuts the camera off, that would help.
Try shutting the camera off.
Okay. Don't matter.
Yeah? You hear us okay?
I hear you guys fine.
Great, great.
Perfect, all right. So do you want to, after that, you want to go through your questions Bart?
Oh, first, is there any comments stuff this far, anything? Dylan, you know, hey.
I mean, I was going to ask how she figured out how much you could fit on all, but it doesn't really matter. I mean, it's all conceptual.
Yep, right. It depends on what we decide on what those dimensional controls are.
To me, the key is we don't want to have, I personally don't want to see one oh eight become a residential corridor. Right. You know? And that's a, it's a balancing act.
I just want to comment, we would like to at least see that between, for, I think as far as a lot of the duplexes. Um, two unit buildings are on the left, they're on the riverfront side.
Yeah.
Between the bridge and say, you know, Cruz X garage with the exception of that little commercial service shop. Um, so there's the possibility that those would just get upgraded, you know, to maybe a three unit building or four unit. You're not going to have high density in, in, in that area. Uh, or more likely, if there's a way that those would convert over to maybe, um, like, you know, the dentist office, you've got the mixed use there. I think there's better opportunities for small mixed use, right, work at, you know, have your office at your, where you're living. On that side in those smaller, you know, because there's smaller lots and smaller frontage, so there's not a lot of opportunities for what you can do to those parcels.
So I think we may.
It's really the, the other side of the, of the road and up from, you know, the bowling alley on both sides of the road. To the town line.
Right, right, absolutely.
Just a kind of thought, um, part of this is choose to bring how, like, properties into conformity, you know? And what I want to avoid is any of these existing houses to have to get, you know, further zone relief like for any like slight expansion. So I think maybe we should maybe provide an outlet or at least, um, for saying if you have an existing duplex or, you know, because if we're going to mandate commercial on the front, on the, on the frontage. If you have existing single family or duplex, you know, you're kind of grandfather then, you know, for any type of like, if you want to do small renovations or something. Um, just so we kind of bring them into conformity because they're not right now. And, um, you know, we want to honor that. And then if there's any redevelopment of the site, that's a different conversation. You know, um, you know, maybe we want to have, so. Again, the, maybe.
Fifty-three lots, there are six conforming lots in this corridor.
Great.
Great, so only get nothing done. Yeah.
All right, thank you Val, um, we're gonna, I don't know if you can hear me, but we're gonna go through Bart's questions now.
Okay, um, so, uh, kind of the first question, um, is. How much of a building's first floor space that fronts 108 should be dedicated to commercial? Is there a specific percentage or should the market decide? So, you know, again, we're trying to create vibrancy, kind of a paradox right here. We're trying to create vibrancy, we're trying to expand the downtown feeling, but at the same time, it's really hard to fill commercial space.
Well, we have to have a threshold, I believe.
Yeah.
Because I know. I would be asked to, okay, I need commercial on the first floor, okay, I'll put a phone booth in there. You know, you really don't have any commercial, right? So I think we need, and, and then, and obviously a developer is going to, in theory, want to do something that's viable.
In theory.
In theory, well, I mean, a lot of mixed use places now would, they build a commercial and then they, five years later, they come back and say. I can't rent it out. Unfortunately, that's a sign of the times.
Right now, that it's a hundred percent, right? If we say what, how much of the first floor is, is commercial, under current zoning, it's a hundred percent.
Under the existing zoning?
Existing zoning.
Yeah, it's a B1 zoning, so it's commercial. Yes, yeah. And no residential opportunities.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know what the right answer is because we also don't need a bunch of. Yeah, I mean, as you said, we just don't need a bunch of commercial, vacant commercial space either. And, you know, most places where you do mixed use, you get a bonus for doing the commercial space. But I, I don't think we even need to entertain that because I think what we're talking about, I think is could be plenty dense enough. So it's something to think about, I was, I'm saying something to think about, what do we think a good fit is?
And what's the definition of commercial? I know I, I ask it all the time, but what is it?
Uh, it could be retail, so, I mean, we go through our definite, permitted uses and so we have.
Not residential.
Yeah, you can't live there.
So, I mean, like, if you think about it, um, how many more restaurants do we need?
The more the merrier, never have enough.
As someone enjoys it, but I, I guess I, I'm asking that, you know, um, I don't want to, um, take away from the, the original, I'll call it the original downtown experience. Um, you know, you have businesses there that have been helping the community and giving to the community. So if I have a ABC company now and I allow another ABC company. I, I, I think what I'm saying is, are we being loyal to the existing businesses that are already here in place?
Well, I, I mean, I understand your question, I don't think it's any of our business. It's a free marketplace is the way I look at it. But here's the way I look at the commercial space, so, you know, you talk about a restaurant. So if you go out on that end of town, um, with say the proposed densities and proposed buildings we allow. I don't see where any developer would ever do a restaurant because you need parking. And you're going to lose residential units, you're going to lose a lot of square footage, right? So it's going to be, anything that would be out there, I think would be smaller, maybe office space, you know, maybe. Yeah, yeah, that type of uses, I don't think it would be a, maybe a store, you know?
Yeah.
But not a, I don't think it's going to be a.
Riverworks.
A high, right, a high in and out traffic, you know?
So where there's the big push, um, to kind of go back to the office, right? Corporations are pushing that, um, so that would be advantageous, but. Even then, people are only saying go to the office two days a week.
Right.
So what type of businesses are we still trying to attract? Are we saying dentists, doctors, lawyers, um?
All of the above.
Small convenience store, what?
Yeah, all of the above.
Yeah, I don't think we want to.
We don't want to limit it, practically speaking, it, I don't think there'd be, the office space that would, somebody would build would be for a doctor's office, a dentist's office, something where they, they're building it to suit for somebody. I, I, people aren't going to want to build commercial space and have it sit empty, it will.
I agree.
But it's going to, um, it, it's not going to be big expansive space.
I mean, part of what I, I would hope what might happen if, if you did have an increase in housing units up there. So let's say it's an additional hundred or whatever it ends up being. You then might drive some demand for some services up there that those people want. So you wouldn't necessarily be taking, you're adding population. So those people might, one of the reasons they might want to live in that neighborhood is that they could walk to some things that are there. So it could be a coffee shop or it could be, you know, something small that they can walk to. And they can walk to downtown, I think that's, they can still walk to downtown very easily from, from this neighborhood. So I, I think if you, if you don't limit it, I, I like the idea of the market having a little bit more say in what happens on that first floor. And I think that it, it wouldn't all turn over right away, right?
Right, absolutely.
We do have some big lots where I think there are some owners anxious to put some housing units that they'd at least come to the zoning board before to ask for relief to do that. So you might have one or two big projects that come along and then immediately would have an impact, I think, on the neighborhood, on what services people are looking for and then the market might just come in and, and decide what makes sense and I kind of like that idea, you know?
Yeah, I agree with you, I, I think the, the trick for us, I think, is the balance of how much do we say you have to build versus what is actually necessary and what will actually work. As far as, right as a commercial space, I think that's the trick.
Take yours to the extreme, then we don't need a planning board.
Well, I'm, I'm all for that.
I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying that.
We're trying to, yeah.
In this particular zone, that whether you have a business on the first floor or a hundred percent residential. I think both of those options are viable, I don't think we should force one of those two choices, I feel like they have those two choices and some people, you know, may never, they, they have a commercial business there. They may stay a commercial business, it just may change what that business is. There's a lot of land there that, you know, could, the business we don't know, right, is coming.
Yeah.
Some other business that we can't right now, uh, anticipate.
The problem is, is if we don't mandate some commercial, we will have zero commercial. It'll be built out residential, they won't even consider it. There's so much more money in the residential. We need to, that's what we need to be careful.
Hundred percent correct.
But is that a really bad thing? I don't know. I mean, I think originally we disowned this most of business because the commercial, well, we wanted more services, I guess, encouraged more, but we thought commercial was more, brought in more tax revenue maybe than residential or less demand on services.
Fascinated on the schools was when both of those areas were rezoned for business.
Right.
It was the idea of, okay, Newmarket has enough apartments, right, the Newmarket, you know, we, we have our share of apartments or multi-families. I think that's what drove the rezoning of these different districts to just business use.
So is that still the case now, I guess, you know, if we allow much more density, I mean, we still have the demand on services. But it may not be generate, may not be family oriented or.
Couple of things keep in mind, um, family size, household size are smaller than they used to be. Um, yeah, obviously that could change, but that's what the current trend is. Two, there's a deficit of children in the school, so we have the capacity. Um, significant investments have been made by the town to improve the school. And, and now they're, you know, based on current, you know, services, they can still, um, bring in, um, a significant, um, increase in, in, in enrollment. So, so there's, from a s- school service standpoint, I think that's, you know, it can be accommodated. For right now, um, you know, there might be, you know, water and sewer, I think can be accommodated since it's up there already. So, and we have, the treatment plant's been upgraded as well. So I think we're in pretty good shape there. And then, you know, typically if you, you know, for, you know, fire services, EMT, where you see a lot more activity or service demand is for like fifty-five plus communities or, um, um, other, um, um, I'm thinking like Wally Falls or the Pines and stuff like that. You see a lot of activity there. So again, it's trying to find that balance of, you know, you know, where can we accommodate? You know, where, where's their deficits with services in the sense that where, where we can add, you know, without, um, expanding the tax base? And, you know, where, where can we not, you know, what, and what are we going to do long term to our community as well? Do we want to attract more families right now to kind of continue the cycle?
Well, I think Bill, Bill said it, and I think Patrick, you were alluding towards it, I mean, do we just, are we okay with just having that whole strip be residential? I, I didn't think of it like that, but you know, you said it, you know, um.
I mean, we certainly wouldn't want to lose our whole downtown and.
No.
Some would say we wouldn't want to lose some, uh, mechanics at that, but, uh, but. You know.
From the bridge north, I'm saying, saying from the bridge north, I mean, I'm quite honestly, it's, it's been zoned for a long time and, you know, nothing's happened. Which gives us an indication that the zoning probably isn't.
Right.
Proper. And, you know, talking, and I, I support, certainly support commercial, but I understand that a lot of developments now, there's not a demand for commercial space. Maybe people have the option. You know, maybe give them an option.
Like a bonus incentive?
Uh, we lost you, Val.
Yeah, I, I would say, but in the foreseeable future as well as the current market. I was, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now, we lost you for a minute there, yeah.
So, given the current, current market, I think where all the focus is on housing. And where the funding is for the development of, of projects, if you will. The, if the zoning doesn't require commercial, we will get no commercial.
Oh, I agree, I agree. The question is, is that a bad thing for that stretch of road in town, you know?
I think it's contrary to what we want to see in town as to some of these, um, you know, sessions we've been running. As to. Wanting to see an expansion of our downtown.
Oh, yeah, you know, absolutely it is, but being devil's advocate, not to preventing anybody from doing that now. It's not happening because there's no market for it.
I think the zoning's not right because it's just strictly commercial and you have to get relief for any type of housing.
Right, right.
Right. So I, I think that's kind of.
We need to think about that.
Yeah, so it's kind of like lessons learned from, you know, what the town has decided in the past to, for this area. You know, what hasn't worked, you know, um, what were the goals, what hasn't worked? What are the goals now of the town? What do this current residents want to see? Um, so is that, you know, some commercial life there or is it mixed use?
Yeah, but it's our, I think it's our job to filter out. Yeah, but it's our, I think it's our job to filter out what people wanna see versus what is practical.
Or how do we duplicate the success of downtown? I mean, is success of downtown driven by the
You know, the conversion of the residential, of the mills into residential use to get the people there.
Right, right.
Right, to support the local businesses and new businesses coming in, and that seems to be working. And how can we replicate that, you know, into the, the gateways to that downtown?
That goes back to Patrick's point there, right? Residents kind of drive the commercial, right, their amount of density.
Two hundred units, and there's an Eric's Pub.
And there is demand for small commercial spaces.
If you allow it to be all residential, then you're not going to have an expansion of the, of the commercial services, the commercial uses.
Yeah, it is much harder to come in afterwards, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if you're an existing business, it, it also changes your possibilities.
Right.
So if you are currently a business, you then have a lot more options if you've got more foot traffic than you had before.
Oh, absolutely.
There's really no foot traffic in that area.
No.
The businesses we have are not related to foot traffic.
No.
Only one can think of is the bar, maybe, the bowling alley.
But, again, but nobody walks there.
No one walks there.
No.
But I know plenty of people that leave other places and drive there, 'cause it's too far to walk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe the laundromat, technically, but
Yep.
So I, I guess we just need to think about that, maybe. I mean, there's all kinds of
It does make sense, though, that you have to mandate it, 'cause, I mean, we're, we're talking to the professionals, right? They have experience, they know what's happening. So, I mean, i- is, is that a wrong thing to say?
No, no, but it, it's, it may be right today, but it could be wrong in five years, or three years, with, no matter what we do.
I was gonna say, this whole thing could be wrong in three years.
I agree, I agree, I agree.
It's also like, what do you want? What does the town want? You know, it could be wrong, it could be hard to do, but what do you like to see there ultimately? What's your goal?
What's been successful in Durham with that whole new development that they put down?
UNH.
Yeah, well
What, which one?
So, uh, uh, maybe development somewhere, when you're going down one oh eight, before you take that weird turn there, um, with the post offices, but all those, like, the, the apartment slash condo slash, right?
Those
Those are just residence.
Then, they've been there forever. That's been residential housing for a long time on those properties.
But, but that's my point, though. But they're successful because it's the university. To, and I guess what I'm getting to is, so thinking of our demographics and where we are today, what do we think would be successful here? I think you're right. Commercial, the first floors, right?
Well, based on where it is in time, whatever businesses would be there would have to, it's not a walking business, right?
Unless we have the residential.
Unless enough that live there, exactly, and Patrick's point is well taken. I mean, if you had two hundred people living there, there's, other businesses could, would crop up. There may be a little grocery store, you know, convenience store, stuff, you know, crop up there.
I think if you build a place where people want to be, the commercial will come.
So build it in local?
Well, in the sense like, we can build housing, anyone can do that, I think, but it's hard to build a space that people want to be in, 'cause right now we're in a housing shortage. But I think we gotta think of it a little more, it's like, what, you know, build housing around an idea, almost, like a common space where people can congregate. If people are congregating, there's more opportunity probably for commerce. And then, you know, recreation, people, so the idea is to, how do we get people to interact with each other more? And you build the housing around that, and then, and then the commercial, you know, hopefully will follow suit, because people wanna be there. So, um, just kind of a
What if, what if we required either commercial space or common space?
Yeah.
That's What happens here?
Right, yeah. Right, so like maybe a ratio, like a combination, it could be, you know, some commercial, uh, maybe say, effectively first floor, and then you could have some open space as well, to it in the sense, you know, just kind of brainstorming here, but
Well, and we already have public space down there, right? We created Chopmire Park, so it's like another reason why I think people would wanna live in this area. It comes with a place that you can walk to, right? If you live right along there, you wanna walk down to the river, you wanna, can't remember if we allowed dogs in Chopmire Park, so I don't wanna say walk your dog, but I
Kayak. No.
That is a, that is a big amenity. You know, that is something that people would say, "Oh, I could live in a place where I could walk to downtown, and I could walk to a little park, you know, I could, you know, I can go down there and get in the water, my boat in the water, whatever." I, I think there's a lot of attraction to that area if you, um, increase density and get people, that, give them the opportunity to live there. And I think the commercial will, will sort itself out. I don't, I don't think we have to mandate it, that's just my, my thought.
Oh, that's a
I guess my concern would be, and Abby probably can speak better to this, when you say the commercial will work its way out, the
The, the profitability of commercial relative to residential is, i- i- in my research and opinion, is so skewed. If you take, I mean, even just to think of something like where the hardware store is, that, the valuation on a per square foot basis for what's on that lot versus if it was all converted to residential, would lead that particular owner developer to convert it to residential.
Yeah, yeah.
Hundred percent. What's the most you're making on per square foot for, you know, for commercial? And if it's a, like a single-story type building? I mean, if it, if it's a single-story apartment, you're at twenty-five dollars a square foot. I don't think there's any commercial space that's commanding that.
Not in Newmarket.
But Abby can
Not in Newmarket, no. Maybe, like in Dover, but not in Newmarket, not at this rate.
So where are you seeing it there, Abby? Like, um, you know, from commercial, residential, like, this, this kind, this kind of situat- or this kind of situation that we're kind of dealing with, yeah, like, you know, um, if we did mandate commercial, do you think it would happen? Like Val says, she has her opinions, do you agree with that?
Do I think it would fill?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think it would fill. I mean, I was thinking on the road today, like ideally, you want a space that's small, like that twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square foot feet, you can't give enough of it away. But you also wanna have a slightly larger space for that company to then grow and not leave Newmarket. I do think that space is gonna fill, like Seco's Residence, they had put up that big complex in Kittery, and they had a, one commercial space that they kind of forgot about, and we leased that within three months because of the residents that were there.
What'd you put in there?
It was easy attraction.
What's there?
A gem.
Gem, okay, makes sense.
So, I mean, commercial is slower, but with the residents there, you're going to attract businesses that know that foot traffic's coming in.
Well, so that commercial space was mandated.
Mm-hmm.
But there was a sma-
It sounds small.
Small, you don't wanna put like five thousand square feet of space up there along with residents. It's gonna be small.
So you said twelve, twelve fifty?
Twelve hundred, two thousand, twenty-five hundred, I mean, that, that's, those are fairly easy to fill, and likely that it's a resident that fills it.
Well, in these larger scale projects, they are on the street side of Main Street, we have all the infrastructure there now with the sidewalks, it is, it provides the connectivity to these street side, you know, ground floor areas, you know, for services or businesses.
And I think you made the point earlier, you can, you can build commercial, but if you built it all residential, it's hard to take it back and break it commercial. You can easily convert the commercial to residential if it really don't work out.
But I'm kind of coming back to sort of mandating.
Pendulums.
It's sort of
Tune in next week.
It's sort of holding on to the greater good, right? Knowing that it's probably gonna be needed, and something like, it's gonna, there's a need, gonna fit, and if you don't have the space to, to start it, 'cause you maxed it out with residential.
Be hard to take away.
Yeah, from a philosophical standpoint, I agree with Patrick that maybe we shouldn't mandate commercial, but from a practical standpoint, if we don't, there will be none. It'll be all built residential before we even know what hit us.
And if it's a small amount that we're mandating, then what we might get is just, just like you said, they'll, they'll build it, and they'll even say, "Well, I'll take that loss if I can't build that space."
Yeah, it's an easy loss.
I agree, I agree.
And
I've seen that happen several projects.
The only proposal that, that we, I saw that we had had, again, it was to go anywhere, 'cause it's not zoned for residential, but they were proposing, I think it was like three or four stories high, uh, residential building with ground floor commercial. And, you know, so, you know, I think that spot would probably go up pretty quick if we switched this and said, "Yeah, you gotta put some commercial in," that wouldn't stop them. The demand is out there, they'll, they'll eat that loss.
Right.
Right now.
Right.
So
Yeah, I mean
The resi- so, the residential is subsidizing the commercial space
Absolutely.
for services that people wanna see here in town, and the developers just can't afford to build that particular space, but if the
If they have enough density on the residential side to, to subsidize it, it works.
Oh, yeah.
Right, I mean, that's what Walt Cheney
Is facing Junior with the project up by the railroad tracks. You know, if this, if this, some form of the form-based zoning is implemented, I can totally see him coming back before the board, and then coming up with a concept that's, that is feasible to financially get the funding to build, and s- to instill have that commercial space. Because right now he doesn't have enough, um, uh, uh, enough profitability out of the residential to subsidize building that.
Do you, do you have a feel for what percent of the ground floor would have to be residential for him to come back?
I don't think any percentage of the ground floor needs to be residential, I think he just needs higher density in the number of units that, that
Who is zoning is permitting.
Meaning, I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, meaning he needs a taller building, or more units, or smaller units?
More units.
So a bigger building?
More units, not necessarily a bigger building, you could build smaller units, but more units.
The other thing we're forgetting about in this discussion that's very germane to it is parking.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, we can, Newmarket, you, you're not gonna build residential buildings with zero parking. You can't do it.
Well, that particular building, I think, has a lot of parking, right?
Cheneys?
Cheneys does, yeah, they have a parking lot out behind it, yes, yes, yeah, yeah. But I'm just saying, so, we can talk about density, number of building you get on a property, but every unit, you probably gotta have at least one parking space, which takes away
Doesn't residential, uh, doesn't commercial require more parking than residential?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
So they would have to
Yeah, so that, that exacerbates it, right?
But, but that's, well, that's the prescriptive regulations we have.
But I, I mean, let's look at that from, from reality, to see a point, look like we're getting on the mills, and when you think about the number of allocated spaces, they really share new spaces with the residential.
There's very few dedicated spaces for the commercial uses of the mill redevelopment.
Right, and Wally's
And if you, if you take Newbury Falls, or, um, you know, right in front of Panzeller's, or the, you know, maybe the public parking spaces closer to the library.
We, Wally has waivers for parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
We can't, we can't ever have any parking Commercial, dedicated commercial use spaces in the mill redevelopment.
Right.
And it's looking on the people to, to be, you know, needing a lot of use.
Just to clarify, we can't even park in a long wait.
Correct, not right now.
They're gonna use the, you know, if we can get the coast bus off
If we have a urban, uh, compact, we can potentially have that conversation, but
As of right now, no.
So it would have to be onsite parking.
Right.
Right.
I mean, there's only a few lots that are big enough to make that possible.
Make a difference, right.
But the Cheneys site by the, the San Diego Sinclair, right, the whole ground floor is commercial.
Correct, correct, but we, he
So if we were to say, one of the ways to get more units would be, you know, ten percent of the ground floor has to be commercial or something, I, I'm making up a number.
I don't disagree with you at all.
Then you could keep your commercial, but you would get a project that worked, right? 'Cause the two big projects going on right now, neither one of them's gonna help the school, uh, from a standpoint of students, right? I mean, they're gonna pay taxes, but, uh
Not contribute, most likely.
Both of them got exemptions from, from school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the fifty-five and over, they can't have kids. And the other one with small units, you won't have many kids.
Right.
I'd say ten percent is too small.
Well, okay, but that's what he's saying, what's the, give us a number?
Well, something to think about.
Yeah, we, we, everybody, like, there's a lot of good discussions, and there's a lot of different ways to go, and I'm, I'm not sure any, which one is more right than the other, it's a matter of what we're comfortable with. We do have to remember that we're in Newmarket, and commercially, Newmarket's a struggle. You know, because we're in the commercial world, we're in the middle of nowhere. People with businesses, you gotta come through Stratum, or Durham, or Apping to get here, and if you have to come through those places with more people and more traffic, why would you end up in Newmarket? You know, so it restricts the type of business that we have, which basically serve the local population. And that's, that's not necessarily a bad thing, it, it just is what it is.
So that's the question, should you allow the developer to decide what the parking is? If the businesses are gonna be served by Newmarket?
Oh, I, I, I think we always should allow the business to determine what the parking is, because no businessman in the world is gonna invest a lot of money in something where he doesn't have enough parking. And towns prescribe what you need for parking, and very few of the parking lots are ever full.
So let me rephrase that.
Example is the malls. The malls need the parking lots they have, you know, a week a year.
So let me rephrase that, should it be more that the developer proves to the planning board that their parking plan's gonna be sufficient?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, exactly, yes. That's my opinion. If somebody wants to put a business in, and they know exactly what their business is, and they say, maybe it's ten thousand square feet, "I need two spaces." If that's what your business is, what are we to tell them? "No, you need fifteen." Because one problem compounds the other. We mandate more parking, which increases stormwater runoff, which increases a whole host of other issues.
Do we run into the problem, though, when that person changes the building's hands, and there's only two parking spaces?
They can't. You know, there'd be, have to be, there'd be restrictions on it.
Depends on the square, square foot.
Yeah.
You know, change of use, depends what that's, space is. 'Cause we kind of, we just recently adjusted the rules, I think it's two thousand square feet, you don't need to go to the planning board for a change of use, unless it's like, you know, manufacturers.
But, yeah, you're right, I mean, it would, yeah. Because you, you can imagine, like, uh, an auto part place that, that has the little trucks that just deliver everything, so nobody actually comes to the store, right? They deliver everything, you know, like a mini Amazon kind of thing. So they need, they need enough space for their two trucks, and that's it.
Right.
But then somebody comes along and wants to use that space where there's twenty people come, then it's an issue, right?
Right. Yep, all right, but, but do you wanna
Yeah.
We could talk about, we could talk about this all night. I'm already getting tired, James.
Good discussion, though. Number two, what should the threshold for development by right be set at? So, for instance, um, right now, obviously, we have site plan subdivision regulations, um, but, um, should, you know, what I want the discussion to be around is, like, should there be more of a, what's a special use permit, maybe threshold? You know, you know, we have like sixteen-unit buildings, eight-unit buildings. Does the planning board care, or do they want to have a little more control if it gets over a certain amount? So the idea is like, all right, you're over, let's say sixteen units, development's getting pretty big at this point, you know, we would like to see X, Y, Z, you know, wherever that is, through a special use permit. So, um, so it's just, and if there's a subdivision, obviously, you know, you know, if you go over that one, that's still be applicable, so, you know.
Well, if you look at, so, look at most projects, and the two items that are always discussed a lot is stormwater and parking slash traffic, right? So, there, I think that whatever thresholds we develop should be related to those topics. So, I think that whatever thresholds we develop should be related to those topics. And even stormwater, I mean, we have.
We do have, yeah.
A town engineer now.
Yep.
You know, you know, I know the, I don't wanna.
I know.
Throw work on her plate, but if somebody wants to do an eight unit building and it's just stormwater and eight parking spaces, town engineer can review the stormwater.
Yeah, we still have to go here for, you know, site plan and.
Only if we make it.
Yeah, sub, in terms of subdivision. Subdivision as well.
Yeah, we have, subdivision by state law, you have to, but, you know, for site plan.
Right.
We could set whatever restrictions we want.
Right, so, I guess.
I mean, I, I don't think we wanna completely get ourselves out of the picture, but it should be a, it should be a pretty healthy threshold. I mean, I can't stand people coming here for a change of use from one building, you know, one relatively mundane business to another. There was one over here a few years ago that I remember that was just terrible, you know, but that's a kind of off on the stretch. What's everybody think about, is it, is it gonna be based on lot size?
Unit count, so, of your units, not lot size, but units, dwelling units.
Yeah, 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 but it's dwelling units per lot, right?
Right, so each lot is allowed sixteen, as currently written, sixteen per lot. That's how it is written right now.
So, an existing multi-family down there wanted to add three units. That, that, I don't know, would that require a site plan?
Currently, yes, under site plan regs.
But that, that addition probably would not trigger stormwater, because that's ten thousand square feet or twenty thousand square feet.
Between two and five, I think it's about five. It's two or five, I can't remember, it depends where you are, too.
I know, I know, it's.
Let me look at my phone.
So, the reason I was getting, I mean, there are existing multi-family homes down there or, you know, maybe there's a low threshold that they didn't require. I don't know, it's two or three units.
Yep. I mean, I would think a sixteen unit building we'd wanna see.
Yeah. And a new development.
An eight unit building we'd probably wanna see.
Yeah.
But there's gotta be some basis.
If someone had a, um, you know, the house that they have right now on the street on the lot is, let's say it's a two thousand square foot house, um, and they're gonna build a two thousand square foot, you know, apartment building, would they still have to come before us?
How many units? So duplex or?
Yeah, let's just say six, you know.
Yeah, they would.
They would. I mean, the chances.
Current one.
Yes, currently would.
The currently one.
Yeah, they currently would.
What are your thoughts on thresholds, Val? Impacts, you know, by right versus having to get special permit or site plan approval?
It's a lot of, like, I think there's a lot of single families that could be converted to duplexes because the lots would accommodate that, um, you know, indoor condos, townhouses, all the single families. So we have fourteen, fifteen just in this area, and in the duplexes, there are definitely the, thirteen of the duplexes could be, because they're pretty large, like three bedrooms in each duplex. So my, my idea of a threshold would, I don't like the idea that they have to come to us if it's three or more units, but once you start getting up into the eight, twelve, sixteen units, I think there's, there's more impacts to have to think about from a planning perspective, you know, as to traffic and lot coverages. I mean, obviously, it may or may not trigger stormwater, right, depending on the footprint.
Right. So, and I think there's still, and there's, there still would be requirements that just wanna be through the planning board, you know, that still would.
Well, absolutely.
Probably be parking requirement, stormwater, and then it'll just be administratively approved.
But coming to the planning board, I think when you're getting into more volume on some of these lots, then I think that, I think that we should be involved from a natural planning perspective.
So, just throw out there, six units or more, Val, that something, are you thinking something? Hmm?
I'd say I'm comfortable with that number, because it does allow the property owners, um, have a lot of flexibility on most, all of the, all the, you know, the Ivy proposed types of units. You know, so it's really getting into a small main street mixed use, you know, or a walk-up apartment building, you know, the larger kind of main street or the courtyard, so if you're, or the smaller part of the building. So those are the, the, um, four types of buildings that has six or more units.
Oh, yep.
So that, that's why I like that number.
Patrick, what do you?
That is, um, what, like, thirty percent of the various types of buildings.
Yep.
And that's regardless of the size, so let's say it's over ten thousand square feet, doesn't that have to still come before us because of, of our?
So, so one, the building has dimensional, like, it can only be so big.
It can only be so big. So, in addition to the units, there's a size restriction.
But, Patrick, but I think what you're getting at is that if somebody wants to do a six unit building, we say you don't have to come to us, if you wanna do a six unit building with eighteen parking spots, which is ten thousand square feet of paving, you gotta come to us.
Right.
So there's other stormwater thresholds or whatever.
It's disturbing twenty thousand square feet, um, or add more than five thousand square feet of impervious surface triggers stormwater, it's, the stormwater, yeah. It's reduced to twenty-five hundred square feet of adding impervious surface if you're within a hundred feet of a, um, a wetland or a water body, so.
Some of those will keep on the, they're on the river side, they will be.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, I, I like that because I, I do like the idea of someone being able to convert a single family house into just a few units if that's what they wanna do.
I agree, I agree. All right, let's, let's talk.
Okay.
Just.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
We'll come back and revisit all these anyways, but it's a good discussion.
So, what should redevelopment fronting, redevelopment's fronting one way emphasize commercial, social, recreation space, et cetera? I know, we had talked about that, but, yeah. Okay, so then, should a mixed-use building type requirement be mandated in a certain, uh, dwell, in it, at a certain dwelling unit count?
Well, we talked about that.
Yeah, we talked about that, so, good.
To be determined.
Um, okay, so this one, do we wanna mandate fiscal and market impact studies? If so, what should the threshold be? Currently, it's at three units or more. So, kind of the idea right now is if you add more to three units, three units or more, you gotta go through this process, fiscal impact studies. We know that we're at a deficit of, um, units, I think through, you know, the master plan, you know, analysis and whatnot. So, uh, we, we understand, you know, services, at least school services, you know, they can accommodate more, um, children. So, do we think three is just a little onerous at this point, given the circumstances and if?
Yeah, I think almost anything's onerous. To be honest with you, I mean. There's, you know, there's, there's fiscal impact, but.
Studies, it should be consistent with, you know, the threshold.
Yeah, yeah, but there's, there's, I mean, we mandate a lot of things, but there's fiscal impacts, but people, look at the town we have because of the residents we have here. There's a socio-economic positive impact that you get, you know, that you can't quantify. You know, I'm not saying let somebody do a hundred units and not get a fiscal impact, but at some point, the relatively small stuff, we should just kind of stay away from. It's my opinion.
I, I agree.
The four.
The discussion is if we have a threshold, what becomes the planning board?
Correct.
Do we still want to require fiscal and market impact studies in that process?
I, and my answer to that would be, we should have the latitude to not require them if we, if the type of development we don't think warrants it, right? We'd say maybe required if the board deems necessary, as opposed to is required.
The reason why I kind of wanna push back, we want predictability, too, you know, with developers. I think that's, um, important, so instead of like the board saying, mm, maybe, they can, they can choose, it doesn't matter when you come in. They can be kind of almost capricious of what that is, if, you know, so if, I think we had a, a threshold, I think everyone would be on the same page, everyone knows those standards and rules and it'd be easier. Just.
I would agree, the regulations are not a regulation.
All right.
How about more than sixteen?
Six.
Well, here's, but here's, here's, so, whenever a number of units, okay, so they do a fiscal impact, it's gonna have a negative fiscal impact on the town, so we reject it?
Yeah.
Is that what we're gonna do? You know, I mean, do we want housing or not?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but Eric, I don't recall we've ever rejected any projects from a fiscal, um, impact study.
I, I agree, because we, we've never had one say that it was a negative impact that I've ever remembered, right? It's like, look, the fiscal impacts are like a traffic impact study, none of them are ever bad, right? But what happens if somebody, somebody is, says, hey, here's a, here's a, for some unique reason, this is a negative fiscal impact? You know, is it automatically, okay, negative impact, we can't approve it? I don't think so, but, um, just being devil's advocate, what are we gonna do?
Well, that'd be mitigation, you know, we're gonna do to mitigate it, you know, if this is negative.
Mitigate a fiscal, negative fiscal.
Change the use or something.
By a fire truck for the town.
Change the market value or something.
Use, maybe?
Yeah.
It's all you can think of.
I mean, I do agree that there's a threshold that we need to do it at, you know? It's just a matter of, we need to know what.
More in the conversion of use, right, that's the issue, the fiscal impact, is that?
No, no, I think the fiscal, so.
Is it more that we're just showing fiduciary responsibility?
In today's market, there is almost no residential development you could ever envision that would have a negative fiscal impact, right, because the prices are so high, the taxes are so high, and families are smaller and smaller, right? Typically, when you see those in the past, which people would always complain about, it was the, you know, the McMansions, the five thousand square foot houses with four bedrooms or five bedrooms, there's gonna be too many kids in the schools. You're not gonna see that, I don't think you're gonna see that type of development. You're not gonna see it in this zoning thing, and not in this part of town, right? So the chances of that ever happening are slim.
Yeah, something.
The rule is to get redevelopment of these parcels, right, for better urban infill, in more housing, affordable housing, or, or different options for housing. Then if we know the outcomes will be given that we're not gonna reject projects because of fiscal or market impact studies in this particular economic time, then why have them?
That was really my point is, I mean, and it could be different, it could be different in five years, ten years.
Economic factors.
Right.
Right. So, so it's more during any application, the board has like a review process, has certain things it looks at, and then make a determination if it needs, warrants a fiscal impact study. I'm not sure what that is right now, but the idea is like, I think if it was like regional impact, you know, that, kind of that whole process. It's like, does this development, um, do this, you know, is it gonna be, you know, like, based on what you already know at that point? And then maybe, I know it's kind of like asking more of the developer to do something once they already submitted an application, but, you know, it might be a good way, an alternative way to, um, analyze if one's warranted or not. Instead of just picturing arbitrary number each application, or not arbitrary, but number where we decide that you have to provide it at that point.
I think that's kind of what I said earlier, right? We could say if we, if we deemed it necessary, we could ask for it.
I just, it's criteria, I had the criteria portion, yeah, checklist, but yeah, you're right.
Well, no, but, and then. But you said it, he objected to it, and then he proposes it.
Yeah. No, 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 it is, but I just added a little more context.
Just hope your mind did about that.
Just thinking, I was like, I like Bill, his pendulum, yeah, I'm gonna consider it.
And, and I.
But if we're never gonna use it, I agree, why don't we just eliminate it?
Bill?
I kind of like where you're going, having, having the discretion, leaving it there, I mean, I don't quite know, seems like we still have to have a threshold somewhere, but I'd like to not totally throw it out.
I like to have the discretion at a minimum because every project is different. Everyone's different, and if, if we're talking, especially if we're talking mixed use, all right? Somebody's gonna come in with, I'll exaggerate, ten thousand square foot commercial use, that's part of their fiscal analysis, right? And that project may not, may have a negative fiscal impact unless that commercial is rented and paying decent taxes, right? It may never get filled, unfortunately. So now we basically have a negative fiscal impact, which, the numbers are the numbers, but I mean, it, if, if we're gonna ask for it, if we're not gonna do anything about it, why ask for it? And I don't think just.
From a tax point of view, the taxes, we, we, we will pay, they will pay taxes independent of whether it's filled or not.
Yes, but it won't.
They get a payment.
Yeah, and then in three years or whatever, they'll come back to the board and say, I can't fill it, I wanna make it residential.
Yeah.
I think it just gives us another tool.
Yeah.
I think, Scott, just to be clear, your, your assessed values for commercial parcels as well as multi-families is driven by income, you know, approach, it's not driven by space.
Okay.
All right, I mean, that's something good to talk about, too, I think it's a good discussion again. Patrick, what do you think about?
Well, actually, I wanted to go back to question three.
Okay. Try it, Eric.
Here's my thing on question three. So, what we wanna do is replicate a little bit of downtown. Part of what you have downtown is you have parking sidewalk business. Now, in this zone, we can't do that because we can't have parking on the street. So now what you're talking about is sidewalk parking business, and that creates a very different feel if you walked, if you're a pedestrian, or even if you're driving, because it's like there's, you're, everything's pushed back just that much further. So it is, I think, an important thing to think about. If we could not have the parking in front of the building, you're gonna create a totally different environment than if, like I said, you have a big parking lot in front of the building. It's just, it's not the same, it's not the same neighborhood that you're walking through.
And that's pretty common, there's a lot of places have that requirement.
Parking in the back.
So parking in the back or parking in the side, and that may further restrict the ability of that commercial first floor to be, it's, it changes what it can be.
Yeah.
Because, um, some people, you know, they don't wanna get out of the car.
Well, that's where the neighborhood comes into play.
That's where the neighborhood, but I, I just think we should make sure that we're saying that, that that's what we're looking for.
That is in the standards, though, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I agree completely that that's, that's the feel we want.
Sidewalk, sidewalk building.
Building.
Yeah.
Parking side or the back, yeah.
Right, I think what's really important for those developments there is having the developer, like I said, build the development around that space. How are people gonna interact with that space? How are you gonna get people to interact in this space? Prove to us that you're going to do that. Because what I worry about is just, you know, just people just building it and not really thinking about it and just throwing the units there, and they're not putting any thought about flow, like, how people are gonna interact with each other or whatnot. I know it's kind of a little left field, but I think it makes what we're trying to achieve, um, more, more probability of being successful.
It's, it's a valid point, but it's very difficult to, to codify something like that. Very difficult.
Trying, yeah.
I know, I know you will.
Yeah, I know, it is, but again, that's where I think we're like, design review process is really important. You know, encouraging developers to go through that so the plan board can kind of bounce ideas at that point with the developer, an applicant, you know, you kind of get a feel. Again, that's kind of a little outside this, but, you know, I think there's some processes that we can utilize more effectively to kind of achieve our goals.
And what about like the setbacks from the road and the setbacks from adjoining property? Is there any anticipation that we would change anything there? So, again, just thinking back to what we have here, right, you have shorter setbacks from the road, and the buildings are right up next to each other.
And area like that, the setback should be, the front setback should be zero.
Yeah, that's why we have it. No minimum. Let's see, minimum frontage zero, minimum lot size zero, front setback, building must be setback of the sidewalk or be stepped back, a maximum of fifty feet to allow for sidewalk, cafe space, civic space, courtyard, whatnot. Yeah, and then minimum side and rear setback, none, maximum building height fifty, and minimum lot coverage is a hundred percent. I think what I want to, before we kind of get out of here, what I do wanna talk about is building width, one oh eight?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, so do we, you know, what I think, I really appreciate about the downtown is how the buildings are a little cut up. You know, they're smaller width, kind of, you know, it's a little more intimate, you know, excluding the mills. I kind of like that feeling, but again, maybe that, you know, do we wanna replicate that? Or you want something that allows for that to occur, but maybe something else too, a little more, a little more longer? So, so kind of a point I wanna bring up.
I'm okay with a longer building, but I think there needs to be some architectural relief.
Yeah.
You know, step back, or, I don't know what the, you know, answer would be, but, you know, just so it's not just one big massive front.
Yeah, I think that's why I worry about, that we wanna try to avoid. I don't know, your thoughts?
I was gonna change something.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, 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 I'm still struggling with the sixteen unit density thing by lot, where, I don't know, where Val was saying, you're subdividing all these bigger lots, I mean, is that what we really want? You know, start breaking up the existing lot, bigger lots that are out there, to subdivide just so we can get sixteen per lot? Or can we do it, go back to so many units per?
Per acre.
Per acre or square foot or, I don't know, what's the advantage of just saying sixteen units versus a per acre or per foot? And I'm struggling with that, I don't know.
Well, it's kind, it's kind of like with the kind of approach that we're doing, form-based code, you know, we're doing it through building types, and each building type has the max amount of units, and it's easier, I guess, for us, you know, I mean, what's being proposed?
It's easier for a small lot and, and fine, but if you got a big lot, you gotta start subdividing it up.
That'd be, that'd be part of it, yeah, that's part of, yeah. Again, you could, you can mandate min, uh, maximum lot size, or minimum lot size as well, it doesn't have to be zero. You can have larger lots at that point, and still allow for the, whatever number you, the board chooses, is it sixteen or something else, you know, to, on each lot, and then the, you would look at the building types that you're allowed to build, and, you know, kind of develop the site plan around that. So the idea is we have finite amount of space in this area, you know, in, you know, in this, in the corridor. So we wanna kind of, in a way, maximize it, you know, from a value standpoint as well. You know, is creating larger lots gonna do, achieve that?
Yeah, I'm pretty visual, how much area do you need for sixteen units? You know, if it's fifty feet, is your maximum high?
Then you get parking, and then, so in reality, it's gonna be larger. So, I think from my standpoint is like, if we mandate parking or not, but if we do, then it's gonna be a larger lot, you know, especially if it's a sixteen unit building, they're gonna have open space requirements, so that's gonna increase it most likely as well.
But, but in the, in the big picture, if somebody has a lot and they can fit thirty-two, forty units on it, is it, does it matter to us if it's one lot or three lots? We're forcing them to do some goofy subdivision just to create lots, you know? I mean, that's really what you're getting at.
Yeah.
And so, do we address that by, you know, so many units per square feet? Like, I know Exeter has a zoning area in town where it's, you need three thousand square feet per unit on a lot. And pick a number, and that's the number of units you can get on it. Now, we can still restrict them to the sixteen unit building.
Per lot, but you need three thousand per, per unit.
Right.
So multiply that by sixteen. That's the max, 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 that's your, that's your minimum, that's your lot size, or maximum, yeah, minimum lot size.
And, and the units don't have a, they don't have a three thousand square foot footprint, so that, that is basically mandating some open space.
So, an acre is a pretty big parcel in that corridor, two.
Yeah, there's not that many big parcels we're just reviewing that, right?
Right.
Right, right.
The real question is, what's, what's the goal as to the development or redevelopment of a parcel? Do, are there, are there instances where we would be accepting that a hundred percent of the parcel is developed? Or there are some parcels that, you know, or all parcels should have, you know, only, you know, thirty, thirty percent developed, seventy percent developed? As opposed to density per acre? Does that varies as far as lot coverage?
Right.
If you're building up or building out.
Right.
So what, what's the, what's the overall goal from, you know, as far as where, where, why would that be limited?
Yeah, that's, that's valid.
In the smaller parcels, especially downtown, you know, like the main street there, I think if we did three thousand square foot per unit, you wouldn't.
Oh, and I just threw all three thousand.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm just saying, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, or like three.
We could take five hundred, you know, but.
How many units are in the railroad house?
Forty-one.
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 That's not much bigger than an acre, is it?
I'm not even sure it's an acre.
Yeah, it's small, it's actually.
It's long and narrow.
What, which one are you looking for?
Forty-one, forty-one, I mean, um, three rail, three railroad.
Forty-one?
I'm starting this stuff.
Yeah, they got, no, they got relief. But they have, you have one spot per unit. Actually, I think they have sixty units cuz they have commercial space too, Horizon's moving in there. Sixty-one, maybe, spark and spaces?
Oh, space, I was like, why did you go from forty-one to sixty-one units?
Forty-one units.
They, they're using the town parking lot across the street, right?
I don't know, I'm kind of.
Railroad Street?
Yeah, I thought that we.
No, no, they're building their own lot.
Oh, I know they're doing something, I didn't think.
Yeah, it goes way in the back.
I didn't think they had sixty-one.
Like visiting and it's like, yeah.
I didn't think it had sixty-one units.
That's who they're considering not lot for, not for, not for their own parking, but just public visitors.
I, I don't know, I, I, I guess I could be convinced, but I, I feel like this is still too, like vague, or, or, there's some unintended thing that's gonna come out of this, sixteen units for a lot, and I, I don't know.
That's why we're here, you know, we're, there's a lot of, we've got a long way to go, there's been a lot of discussion, we haven't made any real decisions. Eventually, we're gonna have to start narrowing it down, but stop thinking about it.
Access, open space, if we do require it in there, so it's gonna, the lots are gonna, as you add those elements, they're gonna increase in size.
Yeah, provided they do all those things, they, in the right ways, and not shortchange those things just to get the sixteen units in. And we, we, that's our job, make sure they're doing it the right way, right?
Well, and Val's question is, what's the goal, right? I mean, that's the key thing, cuz the developer's goal is to put as many units as we'll let him put in there.
Is that sixteen inclusive of commercial?
Yes, it just says sixteen units.
Yeah, it just says under residential, just sixteen units.
Well, yeah.
Right.
Residential use up to sixteen, so it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't include commercial.
So maybe they could get more.
But you look at the building types too, you're, you're sixteen units, I mean, there could be multiple buildings too, I guess, on a single lot. But, you know, you're not gonna get a courtyard if you're gonna add, well, you could, but like, that's the maximum residential building type. So, I think, I think more to think about, as you said, Bill.
Yeah, I kinda like the, what you said, Exeter, it's certain unit, something square foot per unit, but that's also, can be limiting too.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. There is no solution that fits all lot sizes and shapes and makes everybody happy.
But again, I think it comes back to, you know, what Val said, kind of why this, this whole conversation is, what do we want for this area? What do we wanna see?
We want a lot of high-end real estate, no kids in the school system.
So I, I mean, I guess we could, we could put the square footage per unit, and then they could ask for more, and we give it special use sort of, allow for hiring, right?
Could do that, yeah.
Let me see, in the next few days, I will pull, they have a couple of regulations in Exeter that allow for pretty dense developments. I'll pull those and get them to you, and you can send them to everybody. You know, three thousand may not be the right number, maybe a thousand, maybe five thousand, I don't know, everything, and, or maybe we don't even wanna go that way. There's, there's other ways to do it too.
It is a little more predictable or quantifiable, but. Well, downtown Exeter is pretty dense, right? I mean, it's, you know, it's just building, 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 it certainly no.
Well, the newer stuff, like on the outskirts of Exeter, are, is getting dense because they're allowing that type of density. Much like, you know, us going to the north end, Exeter, you go west, down by the, over the railroad tracks, by the Legion, they're allowing pretty dense stuff down there, it's on the outskirts of town, much like this is, to us, it's a similar location relative to the downtown.
So is, is it more, Bill, that it's just not predictable, how many lots can be subdivided?
Or that they're going to present sort of a substandard developments thing.
They're gonna shoehorn things in.
Yeah, shoehorn things in, and we're not gonna have the tools or the savviness, or, you know, a future board's not gonna realize, you know, that's not appropriate.
So I think that's where that threshold comes in, like, what, like, that, that, what's by right, what should we allow by right? And then what's that threshold to really?
It, it brings up, but, part of that is, another point is, I don't know how we ever get to a zero minimum, zero frontage. That makes no sense.
You can't, yeah.
That makes no sense. So if somebody can, you can have a lot behind a lot, and you can build on that lot in the back, that, that makes no sense, I've never seen that.
Yeah, remember if I could drive what?
Say what?
The minimum of the housing side, it was twenty-five feet wide, and then you need access.
Yeah, so it'd be like an access, a curb cut.
At least twelve feet, so that's a minimal lot of thirty-seven feet.
No. No, you take a lot in the back and put a building on it and do an easement to access the road, the road to front, you actually have no, you have zero frontage. I just, I just think I, I, it's, it's odd, I've never seen it, but.
I don't think we're allowing subdivision, oh, you, cuz you're saying, if this, if this was in the ordinance, somebody could subdivide that.
Correct, correct, correct.
They'd still have to, they'd still have to provide access, but again, it goes to, if it's owned by one person, yeah, yeah.
It's a village point, where you would have people come, they could create, you know, take large lots and subdivide them, providing them access to the front lot, just to be able to meet an, an ordinance that says, oh, you can have sixteen units on a lot. So I'm gonna cut up all my lots and quarter your sizes, easements running over them for access.
Right.
That's gonna be the unintended consequence of having a, a density driven by lot size.
Well, I think it's. Yeah, the zero frontage thing is the problematic thing to me, is I, I, you know, and I'd have to, we'd have to ask Ivy, I don't know where any place has ever done that. She has it in here, I, I assume that it's been done somewhere, but, you know, I don't know where, and I don't know.
I think that's, that's what that is saying, you know, I have a, let's say there are one acre lot, and you have zero frontage. So I'm, I'm creating two back lots with a shared driveway through, you know, the front lot.
Right. Right.
And so now I have three lots, and I'm putting sixteen units on each lot, and all of a sudden now I'm at forty-eight units, where maybe if it was just a single lot, I would have a better design in, or I'm limiting to thirty-two units.
Right, I mean, the, the unintended consequences are valid, you know, if we leave something open or vague, the developers will take advantage of it, and it'll be way too late for us to correct it, there'll be too much in.
No, no, I agree, I agree a hundred percent.
And the worst thing I think that could happen out there is just people subdivide lots and shoehorn things in sideways in every which direction just because.
Right.
We've allowed it, you know?
Yes, that's where I was heading, where, you know, our minimum, by style or design, is twenty-five feet plus your access. So, to your point, is the minimum lot size gonna be thirty-seven feet or forty feet, or something like that?
Minimum frontage.
Minimum frontage, yes, yeah.
I think, sorry, minimum front, on the main street.
Yeah, I think it's something we need to look at, another, another piece of, that we're looking at. But this is good cuz we're finally, I think we're digging into the details. Not getting any answers, and we don't need any answers at this point, but we're getting a lot of thoughts, and we're getting closer, cuz we're, we're talking about it, right? So, I. Yeah, yeah, so as far as I'm concerned, I've had enough of this for the night.
Well, what would we wanna name this, Village Corridor?
That's fine.
Yeah, Lamprey River, I like the, Patrick, you were talking about how it's like down there, it used to be called Lamprey Village?
Original settlement in Newmarket was called Lamprey River Village, yeah.
I like that, Lamprey Village Corridor, I don't know, may as well too long, do we like that? Just something to think about, so, you know, I know we don't like the beer, like the T-five, you know, T-four monikers, but trying to add a little local flair to it, so.
And it makes it more descriptive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Lots, it defines what the goal is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is our core, you know, this is the core of the town, we just wanna maintain that, that village.
Yep. Great, all right, I think before Jane makes a motion, for our next, yeah.
Is anybody okay with any of that discussion, or did, did anything else anybody wanna?
That's our kind of like next steps.
Say that, finish up.
Okay, yeah, so I think next steps, would the board like me to put together some language to review? Are we there yet? Do we still wanna discuss what we have, like some of these questions right here?
I feel like draft language will help with direction.
So I think we need to discuss, you know, what do we want for frontage, it seems like we want frontage here, not zero. So, you know, maybe just put together some numbers, thresholds for above, so not by right, but maybe special use. Put in some criteria together, through special use permit, if we do have a threshold, this is what we're looking for. If you're providing more than, heck, those number units. And then, are we, circumsensus on commercial, do we want a hundred percent, fronting one oh eight? Or do we want a percentage? We still, still want you to chew on that?
I, I, I would wanna chew on that, cuz I, I understand Patrick's position on that, and I'm not prepared to say definitely one way or the other.
Say yes to the commercial, but maybe, yeah, maybe there's, or some, a little bit more option as far as, you know, it doesn't have to be in the front, or they have some choice there. Cuz if the parking's in the back, maybe that's where the commercial wants to be, is in the back of the building. So they're parking, they're near their parking.
Yeah, there's a development in South Berwick that's like that.
Especially if it's like small office, that, that, they don't, they don't care about, you know, the walk-in people.
But right now, it's the entire ground floor, right?
This entire building has to be commercial.
Right, oh, 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 currently, yeah, 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 yeah.
No.
So for instance, fifty percent would be the front of the building is residential and the back of the building is commercial on the ground floor.
Yeah.
Something like that.
It's like a rear entry.
That's a better starting place anyway.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I think some percent means a lot of things.
And I think for homework too, just for you guys to think about as well is like, what do we want for this area? What's our main goal? Obviously, it's housing, commercial, but like, what are the non-negotiables in a way? You know, what do we want this to transform, this area? You know, what, what's our vision for this area, if anything?
Yeah, I mean, my take is as a board, there should be nothing that's non-negotiable. Because we're sitting here making decisions we think we know, but we may not know.
Mm-hmm, true.
We may be completely wrong. It's happened in town several times with rezoning changes where, look, they rezoned one fifty-two thirty years ago and nothing has been built there. Nothing. They took away the residential, made it, you know, commercial and nothing has happened. So.
It's incinerated.
Good point, good point. So I mean, I think we just need to be wary of that and understand that, you know, and even, we get done this process, a year into it, we may find out we need to make significant changes. But I don't, my opinion is there's nothing that's, we should demand that I can think of right now. Maybe we'll come up with something, but I think we want to be.
We don't want a prison built on Main Street.
Flexible, sure. Okay, great.
I know a lot of this came from Ivy and probably certain stuff too. I, I just, I guess we're assuming that Ivy's been kind of looking at New Hampshire's trends and towns and things.
Yeah, a lot of this process through, you know, property owner driven. So when we reach out to focus groups, obviously, there's a limited amount of people that we got, but we basically, you know, basically what we did was two-pronged. One, we were through the master plan process, hearing what people want. And then in addition to that, reaching out to property owners in these focus groups to see what they want. You know, what, what they're comfortable with, what they envision for their property and their surrounding, and their neighborhood. And then when we understood what building types they're comfortable with, we took those and added them in here. And then kind of, or in the general vision, you know, from a use standpoint as well, so.
And the base though, I think the, the base of this, a lot of this was thinking about Dover, right? That area of Dover where they did the mixed-use development, that they put a lot of residential in that ultimately attracted commercial.
I think originally, you know, when we did the gateway, you know, like that, that was kind of the concept, but I think it evolved into something more.
Yep.
And, you know, more New Market, you know, is in the sense, uh, kind of allowing for property owners to do more with their land, to add more opportunities in a way that's in line with the vision of the town through, you know, master plan process. So, yeah, definitely, it was, it was initially part of the idea, it was like that on Dover Point, I think you're referring to.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, I think, I think it's evolved in something uniquely New Market, so, which I'm happy. Going through this process, so, good, good stuff, I thought, today.
Yeah, that was very good.
Does it comment as far as the owners within this area of a lot? I'm looking here, so fifty-three lots, try to pull up the vacant ones. And then the apartment buildings. Yeah, so the owners are actually absentee, they don't, they're absentee landlords, they're not overoccupied units. Dudes and single families, which is a huge percentage.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Now, just, when we comment on, you know, what are, what are, what are the owners looking for?
Right. Well, quite honestly, most of them are looking for whatever increase of the value of their property.
Right.
I mean, but, thank you, Val.
Bouncing.
So, what a bad night. I've got a long chairman's report.
Oh.
What?
I've got nothing to say. Bart, yeah, committee reports, any committees?
No meetings.
No meetings, right.
We didn't have a town council meeting.
Really? How's the town surviving? You didn't have a meeting? Council meeting?
Nothing, only gender.
Wow.
Town council, really?
Yeah.
The lights are a little bit brighter, that's why. Paid the bills. Bart, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing. We're just going through the master plan. A lot of the committees are meeting. You know, you know, drafts are being written. You know, a lot of the goals, the objectives of meetings, we're going through, identifying goals for, you know, through, you know, each chapter. So once we get through that process, we'll start writing the drafts. So, so, yeah, there's a lot of different committees out there working on each chapter, so. So that's all really I got to report.
Beautiful.
I make a motion.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made second. Any discussion? Here, none, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Thank you, Val.
Thank you. Thank you, Val.
Have a good one. Have a good one.
You too.